Mayor, we are recording. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Paula, and thank you, everyone, and welcome. This is the City of Cottonwood Heights. This is our work session. It's Tuesday, September 15th, 2020. Hopefully, everyone has an agenda, and the first item I need to do is read a determination by me as the chair of the city council concerning an anchor location. And this determination states pursuant to Utah Code annotated 52-4-2074, the city's mayor, as the chair of the city council hereby determines that conducting the meeting of the city council on this date at an anchor location presents a substantial risk to the health and safety of those who may be present at the anchor location. It is well recognized that a global pandemic currently exists related to COVID-19, the coronavirus, which has potential to overwhelm Utah's healthcare system. Therefore, due to the state of emergency caused by the global pandemic, I find that conducting meeting at an anchor location under the current state of public health emergency constitutes a substantial risk to the health and safety of those who may be present at the location. Therefore, this online meeting. The next item on your agenda is reviewing our business meeting tonight that starts at seven. Again, we'll do a welcome, and I'll do a read the determination once again. We'll, of course, have our pledge. Then we have citizen comments, and it's important to note that we also have public comments on the trail access plan to the Bonneville shoreline. So there's two separate, and I'll try and make that clear. Now, in our last meeting, we clarified that we will take public comment for one hour. In our last meeting, we said we allow up to two minutes. There was some question at the end of the meeting that we probably should have gone back to three because 50% of the people who were signed up didn't necessarily want to speak. So I'm assuming, and council can give me some feedback on this, that we will allow three minutes for each person who wants to speak, and five minutes if they represent a group. That's the standard we've done for for many years. So we'll go back to that and try and keep it close to the one hour maximum. Comments, questions from any of the council members on that?
No, the only comment that I had is if we, for some reason, ran out of time, and there were still people that wanted to speak. I made the suggestion that they, those people that were in line, be given first in line at the next meeting, if there were two or three or however many that were left over. If they came back in two weeks for public comment, they'd be the first ones allowed to speak at the next meeting. I didn't know if that was something we needed to do.
Scott, if it was me, and we're just two or three, I'd go an extra five or 10 minutes personally.
And you're the chair. You could certainly opt for that.
But I, I, yeah, hopefully, we can stay close to that one hour, though.
I expect that we probably will, but.
Yeah, but I hear you. Yeah. Any, any other suggestions or comments?
I think that's fair, Mayor. If there was just a few, I think if the time was spent, I think, I think we'd be okay at that.
Yeah, I just, yeah, I'd feel awkward if we heard everyone. All of a sudden, there's one person left, and I'm saying, sorry, you can't speak. But yeah, if there was 20 or 30, that'd be a different thing. But we'll go back to the three minutes for an individual and five minutes for some of the represented group. And again, as suggested previously, I'll read a little statement about stability and decorum. We actually included that on the agenda for those people who registered. So we don't have, hopefully, any personal attacks and things like that. So following citizen comments, we have public comment on the trail access plan. Mike, any comments about that real quickly?
Mayor, I'll just plan to give a brief update as we introduce it for public comments with the changes that have been made since the last meeting.
Yeah, I read those four. I think it was four changes made. Yeah, I appreciate those. Then we have staff quarterly reports from our UFA Assistant Chief Riley. So we'll have you do your report today, correct? Oh, there he is. Yeah.
Ready to go.
And we had our board meeting this morning, so it's right on top of some interesting discussion, if you refer to the fires in California, which I'm sure you will a little bit. We have several action items. The first one is our contractor agreement with Greg Curtis that we talked about in our last work session. Any questions about that? The second action item is a resolution into a independent contract agreement with Capitol Hill Advisors. We also talked about that in our last work session. Any questions about that one? Next item is a resolution accepting a bid and approving entry into a construction contract with PEX striping for our citywide striping project. Matt, you want to introduce that just quickly now? And I know you have to do it again in the meeting.
Yeah, just Mayor and Council, this is our annual, excuse me, our annual striping contract that we do each year, and it was bid out, and PEX striping is the one who won the bid on this.
How does that price compare with prior years?
They came in a little bit higher than our budget of 100, and they came in at about 106, which is about, we're seeing that fairly typical, anywhere between 95 and 105, somewhere in that for our city.
Okay, thank you. Next item of business is a resolution entering into an agreement with Utah Department of Heritage of Arts. I'm assuming that's with the Arts Council. Tim, do you want to, Tim, is that, would that be you?
Actually, Paula can address that. Maybe she's not there. Anyway, this is a grant that we applied for and received for arts. Are you there, Paula?
I am. I was muted. I'm sorry. But you go ahead. You're doing great.
Anyway, it's a grant agreement, and we applied for this for some of our arts programs. We're excited to get it. So that's what, what that, that item is for.
Is this, is this a reoccurring grant we have each year?
It is. We apply for it for different types of projects, and it is one that we get each year.
It's a two-year grant. It's divided into years. We got 4,500 last year, and we're getting 4,500 this year.
Okay. Thank you. Next item of business is an interlocal cooperation agreement with Salt Lake County concerning community development block grant program and other federal programs. Something I've been involved with over many years. But Mike, you want to introduce that, I think?
Yeah, we were notified just a week and a half or so ago that the county, in order to administer these grant programs, they're generally administered through the Federal Department of Housing and Urban Development. So CDBG, Emergency Solutions, Home Investment Grants, the county has to have a be designated as an urban county, and HUD changed its requirements to do that very recently. So the county now needs to update its interlocal agreement with all of its cities and towns in its jurisdiction to make sure that it can continue to administer these grant programs. So we found out just very recently, and they need to send all of the approved interlocals back to HUD by this Friday.
Any questions regarding that program or this agreement? Hearing none. The last item of business is a resolution approving disposal of unclaimed property and former evidence. Robbie, is that you, or is that Tim?
Scott and Robbie on this one.
Good, Robbie.
Yeah, I think it's both of ours.
So anybody want to explain that? It's probably both property and equipment?
Yeah, this is unclaimed property out of evidence that we're going to send to the auction company. We just need have it authorized for disposal. We've advertised it and follow the rules of disposal.
Okay, we've thirty routine. We've done this in the past. Any questions on this item? The last item is, of course, our consent calendar, which is the minutes for August 18th, which I think was sent out earlier today. Okay, that is the business meeting agenda. Now we can go back to our work session, and well, we've got four important topics. The first one, we'll spend about 40 minutes on that. It's a stormwater fee discussion, and Matt or Tim, who's going to kick it off?
I'm going to kick it off. I just shared my screen. I hope you can all see that. Is my, is it moving to different slides? Sometimes I've had problems with that. Is everyone seeing that?
We're seeing the, we're seeing the presenter view of it instead of the full view. I think if you go under display settings at the top of your screen.
I'll help you real quick. I'm, I'm in here, Sam.
Oh, perfect.
So you're going to want to stop share and then hit the share again, and then make sure you're sharing screen one here, and then hit share. Does that look better?
Yeah, that's, that's perfect.
Okay, great. Anyway, appreciate taking a few minutes with this. Matt Ship and myself, we have Jonathan Ward and Mark Anderson here from Zion's Financial with us. Susie Becker can be here tonight. She's at another, I believe, another city council meeting. What we want to do real briefly is go through a little bit of the background to remind you of the process that we've been through and provide more detail. We presented information last week, or two weeks ago, and you asked for more detail on the scenarios. So that's what we're going to do. But I'm going to go through some of the background on this. You remember, we, the council funded a study for us to do. We started that last year. It moved through the first part of this year. We had Zion's Public Finance assisting with evaluating the stormwater fees, and then updating our stormwater master plan. We had TO engineers that did a significant analysis of what the costs and what the issues are with our system and updated that plan. These are the two entities. As you recall, TO engineers, and we provided information on a document earlier, and we can still provide that to you again if you need it. But in that document, it outlines that there's approximately $19.2 million worth of projects. They're line itemed out in very detailed, detailed analysis showing exactly what streets, what areas, and the cost projections based on the analysis that TO engineers did. The analysis was based on age of piping and a variety of different other areas. Matt, you can add anything to help us understand what those costs would be, and they identified the 19.2 million. So these two, the analysis that both of these entities did is very important in how we move forward and look at how we're going to fund the future of our stormwater improvements. The stormwater fee component of this deals with, excuse me, I just deals with.
Tim, do you want us to save our questions till the end, or do you want questions in the middle, so everybody can kind of think?
I might hit some of your questions. So I'll do either way. If people have things.
Oh, no, that's fine. Let's, let's hold, let you finish, then, people, if you can kind of get your questions ready. Yeah.
Okay. The, the stormwater fees address a number of different elements. Obviously, stormwater operations and maintenance, and then capital projects. But we have a significant regulatory compliance aspect from the federal government that we've been dealing with for a number of years, and those are the things the stormwater fee addresses. Last or two weeks ago, there was discussion about and concern about what we've done in the past. Over the past 10 years, we've had about 2.2 million worth of capital expenditures. That's just capital costs that we've expended funds on to address capital needs in our stormwater projects. Then in addition to that, on a yearly amount, we, we have about 600,000 approximately yearly that we expend in operations, maintenance, and other aspects. So, so we have done work in the stormwater system, obviously, over the past many, many years. But there is definitely a need for additional funds to address a number of different expenditures related to this. The detailed model that TO engineers did, just to give you a little bit reminder, I think we presented this back in February, and analyzed 70 miles worth of conveyance, 1,200 plus the, the model with the basin. And Matt, maybe you can explain this a little bit better, the detailed runoff analysis. Is there anything you want to add related to that?
No, I think you got it. But when you talk about the 1,200 basins, it sounds like a lot. Cottonwood Heights has approximately six major basins, and each one of those basins has a mix of smaller ones and smallers, and what the basins are, just where the water runs off from and into a local point, and then we move it out of there. So we have quite a few basins that we've modeled. We do have 70-plus miles of pipe, and that, that nutshell is what Tim's explained, so.
Model also talks about levels of service. Generally meets levels of service. There's some improvements needed. Many pipes, though, are in poor condition. There's upsizing needed. Material improvements need to be addressed in this. That's all part of the analysis that TO engineers did. We also, in the previous presentation to you, as far as breaking down how the stormwater fee, if it's implemented, would work, you, you base it on defining equivalent residential units, roughly 5,000 square feet of impervious surface for a single-family lot. And you multiply that by three times. This is the model that was generated as part of the stormwater fee analysis that that we sent you information on, but I'm just putting it together in a nutshell here. So if you're, you're a single-family resident that has one ERU, you would be charged for that one ERU, and basically, it converts up to different amounts with businesses as well. So basically, to summarize what TO engineers put together as far as needs with the 19.2 million, there's the 4.2 million of clean and cammering of the lines, immediate spot repairs of 500,000. You can see the different elements there. There's high priorities related to pipe replacements. And so there's a breakdown of where they see the priorities in the city of what needs to be done and what needs to be addressed in phases one, two, and three, related to different priorities of projects. All of that specified in the update of the stormwater study, and once again, we can forward that to you, but it, it, it is very detailed. It's not just numbers like this. We have it broken, broken down by project and area and street, actually. But these are the costs that equate the 19.2 million. You see a lot of it is in the pipe replacement, upgrading pipes, and a variety of different other things. So, so moving on, right now, with our general fund. So our general fund, I know that these are a lot of numbers, but for, for example, in 2021, I mentioned that we spend about 603,000 in operational cost and salaries and benefits related to the work that we do with our general fund expenditures. This is not capital projects. This is the ongoing maintenance and work that our staff does to make sure we're meeting our regulatory requirements under the federal government. But we spend about 603,000 in these operational and costs. I mean, if, taking away the billing, if, if this relates to how much billing would cost, which I'll associate that with the three different scenarios we're going to show you. But we're anticipating the billing costs if we implement a stormwater fee to be a little over 100,000, and and then that would fluctuate a little bit over, over time. So total billing, along with these costs, would be 719,000 roughly, and these are the ERUs that have been estimated for the area. Just keep this in mind. I'll get into more detail here in just a minute. Related to the regulatory requirements, I just want to hit, hit this. Federal and state regulations apply, and we have to be doing certain things each year, which we are working towards. And Matt, correct me if I'm wrong. It includes litter prevention, cleanup, public education, which we participate in. Mike Marabella on our staff is heavily involved in this. Regular water testing, code enforcement, other pollution monitoring and prevention activities. These are things that we are doing each year to be in compliance with these federal and state standards. So one of the big aspects that you have to look at as policymakers is the current situation right now. We're utilizing our taxes under the general fund to, to pay for stormwater improvements. The current situation, really, only taxable properties participate in funding stormwater needs. But the difference with the new user fee, a stormwater fee, all users would pay. So what it does is it provides more of a reliability of funding source. So you have a dedicated amount under, under a fund that doesn't compete with general fund dollars that is more fiscally sustainable, that has to be dedicated towards this if you adopt a stormwater fee. And the stormwater program doesn't compete, as it says there in the last bullet, with other critical budget items. And right now, that's kind of what's been occurring over years, is it's competing in the general fund with other projects, such as roads or other aspects of our general fund. So stormwater fee would do two things. One, if you implemented it, all customers pay, not just those that are exempt from taxes or not exempt. And then the second thing is, it would be a dedicated fund that would only be used for stormwater. We did an analysis just to show you, and I know this may be hard to see, but we, we have a number of parcels that are tax exempt. This, this right here, these are entities that don't, that don't pay taxes. Under the stormwater model, they would have to pay. We have roughly acreage, a total of about 5,100 acres in the city. About 556 acres are, are those that are tax exempt right now, about 11% of, of the property as far as acreage. And so anyway, if you implemented a stormwater fee, those that are tax-exempt properties, they would pay into the fee. So it's a little bit more equitable because they're paying into what they're using with the stormwater fee. We'll send this, this slide presentation out. So last, or two weeks ago, we talked about three different scenarios. The first scenario, and by the way, we, we can mix and match. If there's things that you want to look at, Jonathan, maybe not right here, Jonathan and Mark, but working with Susie, we can look at different scenarios, but we, we analyzed three scenarios that we think are fairly viable. One is a $6 per ERU. That's per month. We built in a 3% annual rate increase, which a lot of cities are doing, an annual rate increase to deal with, with cost of, or cost of, not cost of living, but market adjustments. In this, we could issue 6 million in bonds. We don't really want to talk about bonds right now because that's a separate discussion. But you could issue bonds with this scenario. But also, in this scenario, there's a $600,000 transfer from the general fund for two years, and then you reduce the general fund by, by half, which would be 300,000 per year. So there would still be some general fund subsidy, but that would be the breakdown. I'll show you more details of these in just a second. Second scenario would be $9 per ERU, 3% annual rate increase, no bonds issued, no annual contributions from the general fund. Third scenario would be 750 with a 3% annual rate, no bonds are issued, but transfer would still be 300,000. It would be a $300,000 savings for the general fund to the, the stormwater fund. So here's how it breaks down to give you a better understanding, and I know this is fairly detailed. But you see the $6, you see the monthly rate. This would be the annual rate per ERU. You'd see the transfer from the general fund. These two years, you maintain the 600,000, and then that cuts back down to 300,000. And then you see the, the savings to the general fund would be fairly minimal here, but then when you cut that in half, you'd have a savings of this amount. And then revenue available under this scenario, you can see the amounts here, between 1.75 up to 1.8, as you're increasing by 3%. So there is also, we built in availability for, for debt service if you wanted to, to go into debt service on bonds related to that. That's the first scenario. Keep in mind, these 1.7 to about 1.8 million of annual revenue available. The second scenario with the $9, you see, it would be $9,108 per ERU annually. The savings to the general fund would be, the, the full amount would go because there would be no transfer from the general fund. And you can see the revenue available, 1.7 million, clear up to 2.2. Once again, keeping in mind, no general fund costs are expended in this. You still have availability for covering expenses and also for debt service in the future if you wanted to. So this, this provides more funding and more revenue available under these scenarios. Then the third would be the $7, $7.50, $90 annually per ERU. There'd be the transfer. Remember, we, this scenario would cut the, the general fund transfer in half. There'd be a savings of the general fund of about this amount, and you'd have revenue available between 1.7 to 2.1. Once again, these debt services available with that as well. So I can go back to these to let you look at it in more detail. Let me just tell you what the services would include in the utility. It would include personnel, street sweeping, storm drain cleaning, maintenance repairs, upgrades, and major capital improvements would be what the stormwater utility fee would pay. And then if, once again, if the council, what we're hoping is that you make a decision on determining what fee scenario you would like us to look at. We're hoping that you can make a decision on that in September. We would go into a public input and public hearings process. These can be adjusted, but this is just a timeline that we could look at between October and November. That public input process would probably include some open houses. We'd have information in the newsletter and probably put together some marketing materials to send out as well, to help people understand the implications. We'd also be looking at utility billing coordination. We've already been doing that, but that would be involved in this process. You could consider adoption after the public input in December. Fee collection could begin in January through March, and then implementation of projects with these funds in spring and the summer. So those, that's just a proposed timeline, depending on how, how fast the council wants to move on this, how much input that you receive, or how much you want to receive as well. But, but that's a timeline. So I'm happy to answer questions, Matt. And anything to add, or Jonathan, or Mark? Was that, was that Jonathan?
No, that was me.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
Well, we opened up some questions from the council, and then Mark or Jonathan can join us if they can help answer, and Matt, you can join as well. I have several questions. Well, let the council go ahead for a minute first. Any questions from the council off the top?
Yeah, I, I had a, a couple. The, you didn't prepare a slide that has, for example, maybe one year of option one versus option two versus option three on there. It's really hard to kind of go. We're going to get this as a hard copy or something like that, or a PDF that we can go back and look at through the discussion, because I have a hard time remembering all those numbers across three sheets.
We can provide this for you. Yeah.
So the question I had was the $2.2 million over the last 10 years in capital expenses, and the 603, the 603 operational is basically, a lot of that, as you explained, was salaries and benefits of, of, of the guys doing the work with a couple hundred thousand of it probably going towards actual hardware, pipes, or whatever materials they needed to do projects-wise. So that, that comes out to about $8.2 million of expenses over the last 10 years?
Yeah, if you add the, the, roughly the 600,000 of the maintenance and operation.
And those, those were pulled from our previous budgets, I'm hoping?
Yes.
Okay. So in the last 10 years, we've done 8.8 million, $600, 6 million and 2.2 is 8.2, $8.2 million, and this is looking at still roughly a 20-year plan of $19 million. Is that what I, am I understanding those numbers correctly?
Yes.
Is there, have we differentiated the, and you had the cleaning and cammering of 4.2 million? Do we have any idea how that splits out?
Matt, do you have any thoughts on that?
What are you asking? Like the?
How much of that's cleaning and how much of that is continued?
That's, that's an estimate. That, all that, all those are, that's the initial kickoff projects. It would include anywhere from raising the manholes or opening up the manholes to cleaning out the lines and cammering. It's, it's, it's kind of a lump project right there. I don't have the differentiation on. I don't have the differentiation on the two, no.
But we've been doing camera.
When you go and clean it, you just follow it up with the camera right away.
Is that to go through and clean what we know of the full system then?
That's the full system, yes, and getting the camera of everything.
Okay, the projects that we have outlined, I would hope that we would be able to coordinate those with our surface treatments and or other capital projects. I don't assume that you've probably done that yet because you don't have a, you've got phase one in here, but it'd be nice to not do a surface treatment and then go in the next year and tear it up because we have a storm drain issue, that type of a thing.
That is the general way of doing it, yes, though we would certainly try to make that coordinated effort.
Okay, last one and then I'll be quiet. So do we pay the fee? Do governments pay the fee? Is that something we send to salt like Metro Water, the federal government? The, all, everyone who owns, has property pays up fee?
The way it's set up right now, yes. That's how it works, includes school districts, includes churches, includes governments. Jonathan, correct me if I'm wrong, I, I think other entities do that as well. Am I correct?
That's correct, I was just gonna, yeah, that's the nice thing about having a user fee implemented is you let everybody who, who basically sends water down the drain help pay for the, for the upkeep and the operations of that system, whereas other funding mechanisms, there are other funding mechanisms. You can have sales tax pay for all of this stuff. Well, that doesn't really correlate nicely with the, the storm drain infiltration, if you will. You could have property tax pay for this out of the general fund as the city's been doing for the last 15 years. And there's not necessarily a, a correlation between increased value in my home, therefore I should be paying more for the storm drain because I might have very little impervious surface where the real contributors are maybe playgrounds, parking lots, big roofs, that type of thing that are going to collect, collect rain, collect water, downpour, whatever, and push it into the storm drain system. So yes, I think that's very, very common across the state and appropriate because those who use the system, if you will, end up paying for it as opposed to everybody else doing it and having some correlation based on use.
So let me just insert a couple of comments here. When I was city manager of Heber City, we implemented a stormwater fee and we imposed it on all developed properties because we had a connection with them for utility bills. Undeveloped properties that were not impervious were not subject to the fee because we didn't have, one is it didn't really create much of a demand and second, we didn't have a great way to bill them because they had no services. So it's common that all, all properties would be impacted by it, whether it was religious or government.
Thank you, a couple of questions personally. One, it's kind of a fundamental comment and question and for Tim and staff is that we asked this question in our survey of our constituents last year. And I think it was like two thirds of the constituents at that point said they would rather not have a stormwater fee and they stated that they would rather see cuts in the existing budget. Again, I'm, I'm not saying my position, I'm just saying, I'll be, that's, I think that's important to note as we go through the public comment process. And I'm excited to hear what they would say now having this detail. The second part is with the TO engineers and their plan, as Scott mentioned, it's a 20 year plan. Is that nineteen point million, is that strictly the capital improvement portion of it? Or do you also have ongoing operational costs of probably six hundred thousand per year in addition to the capital in that plan?
That nineteen million is the capital portion of it, Mayor? You would still, you would still have everyday maintenance and, excuse me, and regulatory issues you'd have to deal with. That's, that's a continual, that's a continual item.
And we're, and we're, and that's right now around six hundred thousand a year.
Yeah, for staffing and for the basic. And we are at this point doing very basic work. For, just so you're aware, we're sweeping the streets and cleaning inlet boxes and whatnot. We're not get delving into the pipe cleaning, which has to be done and taken care of also.
Mayor, you, you can see, for example, on this option one, you can see on the screen, this is, this would be the res, revenue available, this would be expenses that would be covered. This would be available for debt service or capital projects, which is, would be fairly significant each year. That's on that one.
You're talking, that's, you're talking the bottom line, correct?
Yes, the bottom line would be available for, to implement the capital aspects of these. And so you can see how much could go towards that each year. It isn't necessarily a 20 year element, it depends on how much you, you put towards these projects and, and what you bond for as well. But anyway, those are the things.
Yeah, I guess, yeah, you're going back and forth, I'm not seeing a huge difference between those bottom lines.
Yeah, there's not.
Matt, I have a quick question.
Go ahead.
When, when we replace these different things, I know right now we have a hodgepodge of different types of pipes, different types of diameters. I know we have concrete, we have the galvanized fluted pipe. And I don't know if we have the, the bigger PVC type pipe. What will, will we also replace everything like this with a, a variety of different type depending on the diameters of this so that we have less problem in the future with what seems to be the galvanized sometimes, like we saw a couple of weeks ago where the camera actually dropped out of sight? Is there technology now that will make our maintenance in the future less of an issue?
You know, that's a, as a city, we have the ability or the right to determine the type of materials we use. Different engineers, different opinions, different places. But for right now, our standard for new construction is what we'd call the RCP or the reinforced concrete in all right of way, which is a pretty stout material and has a long life to it. And it, it's proven itself over, over and over again. So we won't replace it with a hodgepodge, if you will. If it's a larger sized pipe, obviously we would look at the pricing and the, when I say larger size, you're getting up around 60 plus inch sizes. We would certainly evaluate that. But part of the criteria that we've come up with when some of these capital project numbers are based on the type of pipe that's in the ground and upgrading that to the new standard and very, of the RCP and the sizes. We have minimum pipe size we require as well as material.
Mayor, may I also clarify one thing that was asked earlier? Or the comment, Scott, you had, or council member Bracken, you had mentioned about the amount of budget that we've expended on operations related to this being six hundred thousand a year going back. We actually have it back four years. We, we've had staff dedicated for four years and we have it broken out in the budget from that point. We haven't gone clear back 10 years, but we know for four years, it's been a rough, it's been approximately six hundred thousand the past four years and.
It's up to length, we've had our public works department.
What's that?
That's when we had our public works department.
Yeah, I believe that's correct.
Makes sense.
Yeah, I want to make sure that was clarified because I, I want to make sure that was.
That makes sense, you wouldn't have the detail under the county contract or.
Correct.
Your care contract, that just doesn't make sense.
Yep.
Sorry, could you send that, break down that six hundred thousand into separate email? I need a couple of things real quick. With the ERU, I assume that it's already a built in incentive for people to reduce their impervious surface, right? They could potentially cut their water bill by reducing that?
We, council member Bruce, we have not gotten to that level of detail. That's part of what will be discussed as we go through the public process. The new MS four permitting does encourage a great deal of low impact development or LID, as they call it. That is something we can certainly look at, but either way, and I'm, I believe Jonathan alluded to this, we're still tying into the system regardless of, if they're tying into the system, there's going to be, there's going to be some sort of an impact to the system. As far as the actual ERU square footage, what we've done on this is we've done our GIS, our GIS department has done a, an analysis of the average impervious square footage in the city. And this is the number we've come up with so far.
And then one last question, when we go through this public comment process, could we consider the concept of a built out city? Meaning all of the impervious surfaces are taken. And if you want to bring more with your development, you've got to remove some elsewhere in the city. Could we entertain?
Completely not true.
No, I'm saying, could we propose it? Could we entertain that as an option for the public to consider? So, for example, we have some really wide streets right now and we've talked about theoretically down the road, cutting them into one way streets and making a big wide grassy area with a curvy sidewalk for, you know, route to school kids. So if a developer wanted to come in and, and put a huge parking lot in exchange, they could eliminate impervious surface elsewhere in the city. It's just a concept that we could potentially consider. It's called a built out city.
I'm assuming that's, that's a separate issue, but it's something that I know that I've read some articles recently that there is some advocacy for similar things. I think it's a whole different debate, but it's definitely a concept that should not be ignored. Because I, again, it, it would be of interest.
It'd be something like during our public comment process, we'd want to maybe.
Well, I mean, the, the reality is we do have unbuilt out areas. We are mostly built it, that's true, we're different than Harriman, we're different than some of the places that are rapidly growing. But when you put a set, an absolute cap like that, then you start getting into, carried to its extreme or a logical conclusion, that means if I want to double the size of my driveway, I've got to go find somebody else who's got some impervious surface and arrange with them to take it out. And I don't think that that's an honest, that most people would want to take on that if they're doing a driveway project. There has, I mean, it, you, you've got to be careful with your assumption.
If I may, council member Bruce, to your, to what you're, what you're alluding to or working towards, like I said, the LID or the low impact development is a big push in the new permit, the MS four. So as these larger developments do come online, we are pushing them towards these low impacts where there are things they do in their parking lots. There are just various things that they can do. So we're, we're working towards that with planning and zoning as we see these things happen. So that is something that we are addressing. But for, to specifically to your question, that is something that would certainly be a council discussion later down the line, that would be pretty involved.
I, I think it'd be a little bit like the tree ordinance. We can't, we can't push it on a lot of existing thing like, like Scott's referring to. But in new developments, there may be some mitigating efforts that, as a layperson, I'd want to better understand. So I understand, understand the question both as it being presented and of course, as Scott alludes to the fact that there's somebody's already built out how that's looked at, but.
It could certainly be included in the PDD ordinance, so an application there. Doing it on a commercial property does come to be, does seem to make a lot of sense and is easy to do. My concern is this, a general wash of the entire city is that we're going to reduce all of our streets by 30% and we're going to have anybody who adds a square foot of cement somehow have to go find somewhere else. That gets to be very onerous for the residential, the, the single ERU property right now.
I just want to bring the idea forward so we can research it, maybe have the conversation and, and bring it into the process.
Okay, well noted. Okay, we're, we're kind of running a little bit short of time because we have other agenda items. Christine, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't know if you've had any questions at this point?
The only question I had, Tim, on your presentation, you had a two million dollar number and then a six, about a six hundred thousand dollars increasing every year. I think it was like, I don't know, one of the first slides you had put up. I just was trying to understand, was that two million? I keep going back. Back, back. Going back, I thought it was one of the first slides. Oh yeah, oh, third slide, I think.
This one?
There you go, that one. So are you saying that's two point two million plus six times 10, so six million eight?
Yeah. Well, two point two is the capital expenditures that we've spent over the last 10 years on stormwater.
Yep.
We, the last four years roughly, we've dedicated funds to operations and staff time to meet our regulatory requirements, which we've had roughly six hundred thousand per year on operational expenses. So that just goes back four years, not 10 years, because we only had our public work staff for four years. So this is what we spent capital wise in 10 years and over the last four years under operations in, in stormwater.
Okay, and we just don't, we didn't have a way of going back those six years to sort of match a 10 year horizon because of the way that we were, we had our public works department. Is that right?
Yeah, correct, yeah.
Yeah, this is under contract before this and the county before that, so it was kind of a lump sum everything.
Tim, this is Jonathan, I think it's important to add or to compare this capital cost investment over the last 10 or so years at two point two million relative to TO engineers' estimates of capital costs needed going forward of about nineteen million. The city's done a fine job updating capital over the course of the last couple of years. But like most cities in the state, storm drain has been a sort of second, secondary thought and afterthought. There hasn't been a whole lot of attention to storm drain, capital improvements, updates and maintenance until just recently, in large part because as you've indicated in your presentation, regulatory pressures, division of water qualities, looking more closely at the, the nature of the drainage and what's going in and how it comes out, how it impacts water down the road, down the river, if you will. And it's becoming a bigger issue. I think our, in our experience, we've seen cities over the last 10 to 15 years getting a lot more serious about what their capital infrastructure costs look like and how they're going to address those in addition to the operational. They've decided it's not worth it to keep subsidizing out of our general fund a system that's requiring more and more maintenance, more and more regulate, regulation. And it's, it's sort of time for the storm drain to grow up a little bit and stand on its own two feet.
Thank you, Jonathan. Now I know time's limited and I know staff, Tim, what your request was to try and get the council to take a position, not a vote, position on a preferred scenario. I'm just going to go right out there and say, I'm not ready to take a position. I still have lots of questions and, but I am willing to put the, all three scenarios out for the public comment period, if, if that was something you would consider. But if you feel we really need to choose a, a particular scenario, I, I can't do that, to be honest with you. If the other majority of the council can, then I'll sure consider that. But I'm, I still have questions on billing costs, which, what entity? I, I still have questions on bonding. So.
I agree, Mayor, I, I think that we need to fine tune this. I think this is a great template to begin with, but there's, there's three scenarios that there may be a, you know, the first scenario may be the, the best scenario. But I think with more information, we need to be as fiscally careful on this, but still, still maintain these. And like I say, when they're out of sight, out of mind, it's easy not to look at your stormwater. It's very easy.
Yeah, anything underground, that's typically in government, yeah.
And I can't, without being able to see all three sheets at the same time, I've got no idea. Because I, they're, the numbers are all over the place. So is there, so I'm guessing, I'm guessing we're not going to be coming to that, just decision. Decision or suggestion tonight, so.
Unless you wanted to. Have public comment. More conceptually. On the stormwater fee with these different scenarios. But. Tim, what's your strategy? Or if we want to wait and narrow this down to see. If we can get a consensus.
I, I would, we're, we'll provide you the, the details of this, um, information. If you want to look at it for a couple of weeks, if you have questions, you can. Let us know. I, I would really prefer the council. So, select a scenario that we can take to the public rather than trying to. Show three different scenarios and, and getting input on three. I would prefer that.
I, I agree, you know, with truth and taxation, we kind of do the same thing. We'd have, want everyone to understand that we come out with a. A tentative. Scenario. And then realize that after public comment, like in truth and taxation, you can come back and modify that based upon the public comment. But I'm, I'm not ready to do that tonight, to be honest with you. If, is anyone else ready to? Move ahead tonight?
I, I guess I have a follow-up, Mayor. I know that. One of the things that I had. Talked to, um, City Manager Tingy about, and I know it's on an upcoming agenda, and that is. Um, looking at taxes and. Annually looking to inflate that based on C P I or some other. Inflationary adjustment, and I, I wonder. If we're talking about this, then we're talking about that. Is, is there some conflation between the two that we should be? Is it confusing to present both of them at the same time? Are we planning, if everybody's in agreement, to? Present, but I guess. My struggle is I'm thinking about that and I'm looking at this and I'm wondering. How to mend them together if the council is. Amenable to that idea.
I'm, I'm do, I did exactly the same thing because I'm thinking of next year and the general fund budget. And the impacts of pandemic. Uh, we, we got numbers coming up here in the next couple of months. But I think they're definitely related. You know, and, and then as Tim has alluded to. One of these scenarios actually saves part of the general fund budget. Does that mean less of a need to consider? Other taxes? That discussion needs to be. Had at some point, I agree. Do we want to do that in an upcoming meeting?
I would like.
Yeah, a part of it would be is if you're looking seriously on when, when, when are you looking to actually implement this and have it? Being started because you need to work back. From that point to, uh. Having the public hearing and having the other and, and making the proposal or having an open house.
So I understand.
This is obviously a tentative.
Oh, it seemed like everybody froze. I didn't know if the computer screens froze. Did I lose you?
I heard you.
So Tim.
I don't think we can make a definitive, any, take any action.
The next agenda. Does have the topic of inflationary tax question. So. Christine, is that what you're saying is to have that conversation quickly? Before we take a position on this?
That's, that's exactly right, because I think the two dovetail and it'd be useful.
Mayor, I lost all of you for a minute, but the next.
Yeah, I did too.
I think on the next meeting agenda, we have the discussion on the inflationary taxes in the next work session, so.
But, but these do dovetail because this. For what, you know, the, the, the amounts they're talking of, of, uh. Relief on the general fund through the stormwater fee. Works the same as a inflationary adjustment on property taxes. It's relief on that general fund, so they do.
Okay, I think that's the direction that we'll give, uh, Mr. Ting, and, uh, I'll work with him and, and. You as council members in your individual meetings can provide clarification as well. Thank you. Uh, we need to move forward. Our next item on the agenda with Wasatch Front Regional Council's federal funding program discussion. I remember. Previously, we've heard of timetables coming up and. Staff and, uh, the city council wanting. Input on those, uh, alternatives or of, of where to request funding. So is this Matt? Oh, it's Mike. No, it's Matt.
It, I think it's both of us. I can introduce it. I've got the, the slides to show here. Um, we, we brought this to the council last year as well. It's the. It's the time to submit letters of intent for the Wasatch Front Regional Council. I think the, the, the group of grants is called the Transportation Improvement Project Grants, but this is the. All the acronyms you hear, C M A C, um, S T P, uh, T A P. They're all different types of transportation improvement grants that are available and. Uh, the funding cycle for twenty twenty is, is coming up here, so. Preliminary letters of intent are due at the end of September. And then full applications would be due in December. Um, so Matt and I have met with, uh, planning and engineering staff and, and discussed some potential projects. So, so we'll run through these, the lists of projects we've, um, identified as, as projects that would be beneficial. I'm happy to take council feedback. I think one of our intentions here was as much as possible to. Identify at least, you know, one project. Throughout the city, throughout each council district. Um, so I, I think we're pretty close. To that, they're not all in one area, so let me share my screen here.
Have these, have these been presented to us once previously, a year or so ago?
Uh, last year's, we did the same thing last year for, for last year's grant.
So hopefully the council will have, some of these will not be a surprise.
Yeah, some are similar. Um, there's a couple of new ones, um, some that didn't score well, so we kind of dropped them. Um, so, so we can just jump in here. Um, so the, the first one we identified, and this is the only one, but north is to the left on this. All the other ones, north is up, but. Um, this is a seventeen hundred east sidewalk project. We've heard a lot of, uh, public comments about this and. Uh, different development, uh. Public hearings and, and other areas, but, um, the sidewalk from Fort Union Boulevard to. Seventy-two hundred south along seventeen hundred east is incomplete, uh, particularly on the west side. So one idea of a project would be to complete the sidewalk there. You can see on screen the red line is. Anywhere it's red is where there's no sidewalk right now. Um, and we have heard from, um, the Community Council of Ridgecrest. There are a number of. Of school kids that walk from the, some of the multifamily, uh, developments along Fort Union up this street. Uh, so this would provide a, a safer way for them. Another one while we're in the same area. This now north is up on this one. Um, this would be an expansion of the, the. Kind of the separated bike lane and wider pedestrian, uh, promenade sidewalk treatment that we'll see on two upcoming development projects. So you can see here on the very left side of the screen, that's seventeen hundred east, the. The property right on the corner there, and then the, the three properties next to it are under redevelopment right now. Um, that'll be a kind of a mixed-use live-work project, but part of that is the construction of a. A grade-separated asphalt bike lane and then a wide pedestrian sidewalk, um, all up on the curve separated from traffic. And then there's another development project to the east on Brookhill Drive, uh, on the corner there next to the fire station. That will do the same thing. And then we have this gap in the middle, so we'll, you know, we'll have two kind of neat sidewalk bike lane. Projects done here probably in the next year or so, and then a, a big gap in the middle and. Um, you know, one idea we had was to see grant funding to try to, uh, you know, work with these. There's only four properties between those two projects to see if we can't connect that bike. That separated bike lane and wide sidewalk between the two. And then that, you know, that continues to gain momentum and we can expand that further and further. Another project idea kind of builds off one that we were awarded last year. Uh, last year we were awarded, um, a grant to improve the, the intersection on Bengal and Highland. Um, to add an additional left turn lane, um. Headed south from Bengal to Highland. Um, but, uh, another big part of that was, um, enhancing the bike lanes and sidewalks through that intersection area. Another project idea we had for this year is just to expand that sidewalk and trail treatment a little. Uh, farther to the north and farther to the east on both Highland and Bengal. Uh, again, the effort here is to. Um, completely connect, uh, existing sidewalks and, and fill in the gaps that, that may be there today. And on this, this northern red line, there, there's actually quite a bit of city right-of-way before the private property starts. Um, so there's an opportunity there to, to do maybe an enhanced trail or, or kind of neat pedestrian area along with that sidewalk project. I think we brought this to you last year as well. We, we did not proceed with this, um. Last year, but, uh, still an important project, we feel. Uh, this would be completing the sidewalk on Creek Road. Uh, this on the very right side of the screen, this is the, the Watson Hollow. Subdivision, this, it, it, just off the screen here, you, this is a big hill, you head up the road and, and you hit Danish Road. Uh, not too far off screen here. Uh, and we now, uh, the, this Watson Hollow project will be developing sidewalk along its frontage. Leaving one, uh, one small gap about a property and a half in length. Uh, where there's no sidewalk, and again, uh, it's a, almost a complete network and a good opportunity to try to complete that. And then, uh, the last one we've, um, we've identified as, as something that, that could be worth pursuing is. Uh, Wasatch Boulevard, this is the city's Wasatch Boulevard, not U dot. Um, and, and I. We use the word widen, but it, it, the project would not be to widen for vehicle traffic. The intention here would be to, uh, consistently build out that middle turn pocket. It, it exists kind of on and off throughout this, uh, this section of city road. It's, it, it exists in front of Jivernay, it exists in front of, uh, kind of green hills and the entrance to those neighborhoods. And then it kind of pops in and out, so, so this project would widen the road a little bit to, to allow us to. Uh, extend that middle turn lane, uh, throughout from, from the intersection down to the city boundary. But also to build a, uh, a, a proper bike lane and sidewalk along that stretch of Wasatch Boulevard. Uh, so, so these are, these are the five we've identified, and you can see they're all kind of, they're all, um, active transportation, kind of pedestrian oriented projects. Uh, sidewalks, bike lanes, that kind of thing. I think these are the types of projects we felt, uh, will. You know, if we can get a couple of them, we can really fill in gaps and, and complete, uh, some missing links that we've, we've known about for a while. Um, and, and I don't know that we had any, uh, priority, uh, road construction projects that we were seeking this year. And then I keep in mind with these, depending on the type of grant program, the, the actual funds are not awarded for. Three to four, sometimes five years from. From when they're, when we're, uh, notified of receiving them. So some of these could be a few years out, but. Again, we tried to spread these throughout the city. We tried to identify projects that kind of complete. Um, gaps in systems that we've identified, um, and, and that's. We're recommending we submit letters of intent for these projects. But are happy to take any questions or suggestions from the council.
I'll ask questions from the council.
Mike, I have a quick question. Seventeenth East, right now it's under construction on, uh. Fort Union, and there's a problem, there's not any sidewalk right in front of there now, and that's a problem with the school kids. Is there anything? We had a few residents contact us about that. Is there anything in the? That we can do about that in the short term?
Yeah, actually, and we have notified the principal of Ridgecrest, um, this street here, I don't know the name, it's like sixteen twenty east. Um, most of the foot traffic is coming from, um, Santa Fe and I think Boulder Hollow Apartments. This road here. Has continuous sidewalk, um, so, so kids can divert here. Uh, and head up and use the sidewalk there. There's, there's a couple of small gaps, again on Seventeenth East, but that would be there either way. So we've identified this as a good detour until that sidewalk project is done.
Great.
So Mike, I hear you correctly that you're proposing to submit letters and intent on all five of these?
Well, I, I think the next step would be to identify which program these fall under. If they all fall into the same type of program, we might have to prioritize. A couple over others, um, but, but yeah, these are all, we feel these are all good projects and would be worth submitting for.
I guess I, I have, I have two questions, um, Mike, thank you for that. Can you help me understand? What happened to Danish Road? And the improvements that we've been talking about for years there? I, I, I thought that was always on, on the, the high list of priorities. Um, based on the one resident who had her money in. To improve that for many, many years. I just, I was surprised to see that's not there and. Mayor, do you know what one I'm talking about?
Yeah, and I may defer to, uh, to Matt on this, but I think we, in years past, uh, applying for that, it's, it's scored poorly. With W F R C, but Matt, correct me if I'm wrong on that.
No, you're, you are correct. We have applied for it in the past and it has. And the other issue is it's not on the, uh, regional. Uh, plan, and so you have to be in, uh. You have to be a, a, I forget the designation, a one on the regional plan in order to get. Federal funding for some of these projects like the, uh, that, that one would, uh. Uh, the S T P program. So we've tried it in the past, it hasn't worked, so. That's where it's sitting right now.
Well, I, I guess, I guess I'll just share my opinion. I'm not super keen on adding a turning lane. On, um, the Wasatch Boulevard we own. I understand why you're doing it, I think, but I think it will lead to unintended consequences that I don't think. My constituents would enjoy. I like the idea of a bike lane. I don't understand why we need to get a turning lane to get a bike lane though. And that, that road, I mean, where the Jivernay is there anyway, I'm still surprised that. I thought they were going to do some repaving or something and. And I'm just overall somewhat surprised that. We have this huge development with all these new homes and the road. In front of it is. Still not fabulous, not lined, it's. Seems weird that we would have to come in with our own money to do that.
And, and certainly we can, you know, we can forego that one. I, I think the, the turn pocket, just because it exists along. Probably two-thirds of that road, uh, you know, we thought it might be good to complete that, but, um. You know, we can submit without that and just, uh. Apply as a bike lane project if, if that's the way the council wants to, to go with that.
Can you zoom in over there? I mean, it seems like there's a lot of potential active developers coming into that area that. If anything is developed in the tree farm, those people are going to have to pay for something like that. That's not it, sorry. The what, maybe my computer.
So I think, I think it's just behind, my, mine's there, so it, it should go there in a second.
I just think there's a lot of things happening there that, uh, if, if there's going to be any kind of development, I don't know why we would. Rush to do something if, if somebody might do something later and.
Yeah, that, that's a good point. Um, that, that's, you know, that's certainly an approach we can take is require certain improvements with development. Um, that, that, you know, the timeline and the extent of those improvements are a little more unpredictable, but, um. You know, that's definitely an approach we can take.
Mike, I know we're running out of time a little bit, but it seems like in our previous, uh, outline of projects, it included. Bengal Boulevard at the intersection of Highland Drive. Was that something that was considered?
Yeah, we, we got that, we were awarded that grant last year.
Okay, so I, okay, so it's already awarded, all right.
Yep.
Yeah, this, this is, the one he's looking here would actually add on to that as being, you know, adding, I guess, this is more adding sidewalk on that side of the road. And a path kind of down through there.
Yeah.
Well, that's, that's a critical area, especially when you go down Bengal and on the. North side with the, uh, uh, Jersey barriers all the way down and stuff next to the road and all. Walking area on the north side, so. I'm glad to see that there. Seventeenth East has been a problem for years. Fort Union that. That bike lane, it would not be my highest, but I love the. Little insert you had that shows how that is separated. I'd love to see that all, all the way up, uh. Fort Union. Wasatch Boulevard, I think it's still a priority, uh, going forward, especially with active. going forward, especially with active transportation, because that's a primary route. So I'm supportive of that active transportation part and the improvements as that whole quarter continues to get developed. The debate to have the middle turn lane or not, I think that can be had as well, but.
And we can, you know, if it's worth pursuing, at least at some level, the letter of intent is very general and very broad. And then we have a couple of months to refine that. And like last year, we would plan to bring any qualifying project back with full details before we submit that full application.
Does the council have any objection of submitting all five of these?
Well, if it ups our opportunity to get them, I don't know how that works exactly, Mayor.
Well, I think they're all scored and so we'll see how the scoring goes and we can provide any influence we have before, during and after, I guess, but.
Is there any reason not to put all five in?
Well, I don't, I'm not, it's my, my district is the Wasatch Boulevard one and I'm not super excited about it. So unless it's changed into something that I can support, I would not support submitting that.
Yeah, I think it would be changed not include the middle turn lane at this time and it would just be the enhanced active transportation component with the understanding that we'd want developers to participate along the route. But I don't have a problem if you want to pull it off. Timing may not be the best, so I I'll let Christine, that be your call.
I'm just one person, so I just wanted to voice it again and wait for other people to weigh in.
I'm good to have it included with, personally with more general, as Mike was suggesting. Not necessarily, and we can talk about the specifics later, yeah.
If you want to look at that, like I said, as a bike lane, I, in a trail along there and drop the third lane idea, we could, like I said, this is just a letter of intent at this point, nothing, nothing binding. And if we can get a decent score and move on to the next phase, we can certainly then start working with the developer if you wanted to and talk to start, we'd have some funding to help out if need be to make, enhance that area.
It's such a high active transportation area than right down to get by Lakai. There's a trail access in there that I, and again, we're talking years out. I would, I would love to get this in the pipeline and tweak it as we move ahead because it's is an important access and active transportation area on the road for our city.
I think if it's, if it's couched that way, I'm comfortable with it. I'm not comfortable with adding a turning lane in which then would potentially move towards Wasatch Boulevard being two lanes in either direction on that portion. I think that's the one thing that we have in our pocket or leverage.
I, I agree, and I think that would be the understanding and I concur with that going forward at this point. Further questions, comments? Hearing that, that'll, that will be the direction then on that. Trying to keep us on task here. Item C on your agenda is our PDD zone, affordable housing. And then we got a couple of guests here from Mr. Hendroid, I know is here from the developers. And Adam Davis is here, but so Mike, I'll let you talk about affordable housing in the PDD zone as it applies right now. And this discussion leads to the north end of the gravel pit.
So Mike, go ahead. Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to pull up another presentation here. So the request tonight, in working through the, maybe I'll back up for a half a second, the there's an active application in right now for the development at the northern end of the gravel pit. I, I'm sure the council is fully aware of that. It's, it's at the planning commission level right now. I anticipate probably in, in the next month or so, maybe month and a half, that you'll get the planning commission recommendation on this and it will be time for the council to fully consider the rezon requests and the full development plan and all the details that go along with it. But in working up to this point with Rockworth Development, who is the applicant, there were some some concerns raised over the, the current provision in the ordinance for affordable housing. So I'll, I'll kind of get to that point here, but I think some background information is important. So, so tonight we're requesting a discussion about the development with the applicant, particularly focusing on affordable housing. And we're looking for the council's perspective and feedback on that housing requirement and any willingness to explore some flexibility in how affordable housing is implemented on that site. This was, this meeting was organized after Rockworth had been corresponding with staff and, and raised some concerns and we felt the best thing to do was to come have a policy level discussion with the council because any change in that PDD ordinance would require a legislative process. So that's, I think, getting kind of the litmus test of where the council is on this is important. So there's a site plan on the right. And again, we'll get into full details when this comes to you for formal consideration, but the current PDD ordinance requires that any development that has 50 units or more construct and operate 10% of those units as affordable units. And the way our ordinance defines what affordable or below market rate is, is households earning not more than 50% of the city's median income. For context, the total, as of right now, the total proposed residential units in this development is 419. 10% of that rounding up slightly would be 42 required affordable units. And then, like I said, indication by Rockworth that implementation of the 50% BMR units presents some challenges.
Mike, is that, that's that 50% BMR, that's the across everything. So that's the same definition that would be used at the Walsh property or any other PDDs, correct? It's not different for tier one or anything like that?
No, no, that applies everywhere in the PDD ordinance where you have projects with over 50 units.
Sorry, Mike, Christine here. Can you just, maybe we're going to get to it. Are you going to talk about what's mandated by the legislature?
Yes. Yep. So, so the next few slides I have and then, and then my plan is to, I'm going to give the council a background on affordable housing policies, kind of from the federal level down to the local level. And then turn some time over to Rockworth to, you know, to kind of discuss this issue and the council's feedback. So according to HUD, the Department of Housing and Urban Development, affordable is you know, no more than 30% of gross monthly household income dedicated to housing. And even at that 30%, that is defined as cost burden. It's affordable, but, but tight. And then if we boil that down to the state guideline, you can see the, the four bullet points there. These are always referred to as affordability bands or housing bands, B A N D S. So zero to 30%. So the percentages here are housing that's affordable to households earning this percentage of area median income. So if your, if your area median income is $100,000, housing that is affordable to 30% of a monthly income of families earning 30,000 or less is considered extremely low income. So this is the percentage of area median income and then the housing would be 30% of that number. So these are the four bands that are identified. Zero to 30 is considered extremely low income. 31 to 50, which is where our PDD is right now, is considered very low income. 51 to 80 is low income and then 81 to 100 is middle income. The state code states that moderate income housing means housing occupied or reserved for occupancy by households with a gross income equal to or less than 80% of median gross income for households of the same size in the county in which the city is located. And then the Department of Workforce Services, affordable rental housing for moderate income renters in Utah is becoming increasingly scarce. All this is to say that kind of standard definition of what affordable housing is, you see that 80% number in almost every case. Almost everywhere you go, you see 80% AMI defined as affordable or moderate income or below market rate. The 50% that's required in the PDD right now would fall more under very low income than, than just low income or moderate income or affordable. So here's some, some background information for the council. The AMI, the area median income in Cottonwood Heights is, is just over 86,000. That's fairly high for the county. And about 27% of our households are below 80% AMI in terms of their, their household earnings. On the right there, this just kind of breaks it down. This is, this is for Salt Lake City, but this is a good breakdown and the median income there is fairly similar. You can kind of see, you know, what the, the actual, the median family income would be in the different housing bands. So very low income, that 50%. You know, a family of one would be earning 30,800, a family of eight, obviously that goes up. But you can see where the, the household income falls in relation to very low, extremely low and low income limits. And then down below is the fair market rate rents of, of, of housing units today. So that's kind of the benchmark here. So now, now we get to the city affordable housing strategies and obviously affordable housing is a huge priority at the state level and at the city level. We adopted our affordable housing plan last year. And in that plan, we were required to identify at least three tools that we would use to accomplish affordable housing and implementing affordable housing in the city. The three we chose were to implement zoning incentives for low to moderate income units on a long-term basis. The way we're doing that is through the PDD ordinance. So that affordable housing provision in the PDD ordinance is critical in achieving that. Two would be to utilize a modern income housing set aside from a community reinvestment agency. So the CRAs we're seeking to create, when you create a CRA today, you are required to set aside 10% of those revenues for affordable housing. And then the third tool was to allow for higher density or modern income residential development in commercial and mixed use zones, commercial centers or employment centers. Our mixed use ordinance and our PDD ordinance help us achieve that. You can see two out of these three utilize the plant development district as a tool to achieve affordable housing. Now, I, I don't know, and this may need more research. I don't know where the 50% originally came from that's in the ordinance today. Because as I've shown, the, the standard benchmark for affordable housing is 80%. And there are a lot of construction assistance programs and financing options that are based around 80% affordable units. 50% becomes fairly difficult to construct and, and operate without some sort of subsidies from some organizations.
Do we know what percentage of our populace is at the 50% or lower? You've got, you had the number.
It's, there's a lot of detail in the housing plan. This, this graph kind of shows it. You're not going to have specific numbers here. But, but you can see here on the right, the, the different bars here represent the number of additional units needed over the next 40, 40 years, so the next four decades. So you can see the, you know, the 30% units needed, less than 30%, that extremely low income. You know, they, they maintain under 100 units per decade. And that's not because there's not a need for it, but I think, you know, we see fewer city households in that band compared to this, this third one, which is that 50 to 80% ban. The, the housing plan projects the most growth in 2030 and between 2030 and 2040 and therefore the most need for affordable housing outside of fully market rate units is in that 50 to 80% ban. So the city's affordable housing plan recommendations are highlighted here. Continuing to utilize the density bonus program included in the plan development district ordinance to create set asides at particular income levels. Centralized focus on re-CRA funding toward modern income projects. And, and this is one that's fairly consistent across jurisdictions, is working with other jurisdictions to create funding sources for extremely low income housing units. And that's, that's not even the 50% that's in our code. That's that 30% or less. Those are very difficult to, to construct and to to subsidize. So there's, there's this option here to partner with surrounding jurisdictions on these projects using CRA, CRA funds or other housing fund set asides. Now, we are, this application came in vested under today's plan development district ordinance. When this is through its process, we will come back in with a a draft revision for the plan development district ordinance to kind of clean it up, clarify some things and make it more effective for everybody. That has not gone through any public input process yet, and that's all ahead of us still. However, the consultant that helped us with this in talking with planning commission members and various partners throughout the community, both housing developers, but also kind of housing advocates and the other side of it. Our draft ordinance, as it is today, will be presented with a more flexible option for achieving affordable housing. Again, I, I don't want to understate the importance of affordable housing and it's absolutely critical for us to, to implement. But, but we do feel prior to any public input that there could be some more flexibility in how we achieve it. So the options we're going to bring forward at, at that time when we bring that tax amendment to you is if you provide units in that 51 to 80% AMI band, that what's defined as conventionally affordable, then so we started with 20. If you want to provide those very low income units at that 50% band, you can do that and then you have to, you can provide fewer units, so that 10% as it is today. Also, an option is built in that if you want to mix between the two, the council can, can decide and, and there can be flexibility there. None of that flexibility exists today and today it's just that hard 50%. And then before I turn it over to Rockworth or the council for questions, some of the existing funding assistance programs available for affordable housing in Utah, you've got HUD financing that, that seems to be fairly common. Again, that, that works fairly well with that 80%, not as well with the 50% AMI. Got Home Investment Funding Program, which is again, part of HUD, part of why we're, we're reviewing that interlocal agreement with Salt Lake County tonight. That provides a small percentage of costs for these affordable projects. You've got things like the Olean Walker Housing Loan Fund and the Housing Authority of Salt Lake County. And then what you see with a lot of cities is that 10% affordable housing set aside in community reinvestment areas. So I think the takeaway here is 50% housing or housing affordable to households earning 50% AMI or less is, is doable, but you almost always see it subsidized in some way, either publicly or privately by a nonprofit, but it's almost always subsidized. So and, and I think we can see 80% done without, either without subsidies or with fewer subsidies to make these things happen. So I think that the takeaway here is our ordinance defines affordable housing a little differently than in the county, than the state, even than HUD does. And not to say that's not, that's not a problem at all, but it's just different, which presents certain challenges. So I think Rockworth's desire is, is to know if there's some flexibility on the council's part in exploring more creative options to providing affordable housing. Or if there's a willingness to look at some subsidies or CRA set asides if 50% is a priority. And that's just kind of the, I'll preface it with that and then I guess I'll just turn some time over to Tom and Adam now to kind of talk through more details with you.
Mayor, you're on mute.
Thank you. I just wanted to preface their comments with an understanding. We've only got about 10 or 15 minutes. So if you can be precise and share with us your comments.
Absolutely. Really appreciate Mike laying out the difficulty. Is it okay if I share my screen?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Hopefully you can see that spreadsheet of a four, this is our summary of affordable housing in Utah, really Salt Lake County. In this chart, you can see, where my cursor is, you can see the city located within Salt Lake County, whether or not they have an RDA set up. If they do have an RDA set up, there's a link here for where you can get the information associated with the RDA. And then we have the, excuse me. Then we have this column here that identifies what we refer to as what is the ask with regard to affordable housing? Because we agree affordable housing is something that's a necessity in our what we refer to as what is the ask with regard to affordable housing, because we agree affordable housing is something that's a necessity in our community. Um, and each of these cities, they have certain codes that they've addressed, most of them governed by HUD. So they request something of the developer to provide affordable housing. And then that's the ask. And then what is the offer? What is it? What is the subsidy that can be provided to the developer? And without going into great detail, you can see that the vast majority of these cities, um, Cottonwood Heights, like Mike has said, Cottonwood Heights is working on their plan. The PDD ordinance allows for some flexibility in providing some affordable housing, but that's being worked on. You can see, for example, like Holiday or Midvale or Mill Creek, uh, you can see this is really kind of the standard. They require, uh, the 80% AMI or less be provided. And then they utilize generally tax increment financing, um, tax increment financing, density bonuses, the use of community reinvestment act funds, things like that. Again, you see tax increment financing. And again, this is just kind of detailing what, what the standards are in other municipalities. And there's reasons for this, I think. I mean, I, I, the subsidy is also costly. It's costly to whoever provides it. Um, and so the, the greater, the required subsidy, which is obviously associated with the smaller, uh, percentage of AMI, that's also a burden on whoever provides that. So 80% has been a common, uh, commonly used percentage. Um, and that's, that's a big part of why we've talked to Mike about potentially using this standard as opposed to the 50%. As it sits right now, from our perspective, the way the PDD ordinance is written, I think we feel great about, uh, responding to basically every part of the PDD ordinance. And Mike, uh, and also Matt, before Matt left, they worked very hard on a policy document that reviewed the policies and the desired goals of the PDD ordinance. Um, and we drafted our plan in a sincere attempt to meet every single one of those goals in that pol- in, in the policies of the PDD. And they put together a review of that and it is clear, I think if you have a chance to see that when Mike has that completed, that we have done what, done everything that we can to meet that, those requirements. Um, this one is a very difficult one because it does request for that 50% AMI and it doesn't provide, um, it doesn't provide any subsidy. Um, and we can talk about that. It just, it's, it's a burden that doesn't just affect, uh, you know, basic returns that I know that affect us, but it even affects our ability to finance the project because, you know, financiers are looking for, they're looking to see how the project performs and that's how, that's how they base their willingness to finance and the ratios associated. So, um, this is, it's, it's a really big sticking point and, um, we want to do something that works for everyone. Uh, we definitely understand the requirement for affordable housing. It's a big deal. If it wasn't a big deal, I don't think you would see that every city, uh, in our county is really addressing it. Cottonwood Heights no different, must be addressed. Um, so we want to address it. Um, I think we just want to look at it from a perspective of how can, how can we be a little bit more flexible? Um, and do something that, uh, is financeable that keeps the project moving forward.
Thank you, Mr. Henry. Uh, let's, let's allow a couple of minutes for comments while we have them. Uh, any council questions? Tim, maybe you can share with us. I understand this is kind of your background too professionally. What's your experience been? And also, uh, Mike, if you could maybe follow up again and say, is a planning commission weighed in on this? But Tim, you go first, please.
Yeah, and I've been involved in affordable housing, um, in my background where I manage CDBG programs. Those were HUD programs. And 80% and lower was always what the standard was with HUD. Every project we had to income qualify for, uh, was 80% or less. And so I think that is more of the standard. I don't know where we came up with the 50%, but 80% still meets the affordable affordability element that I think, uh, communities, federal and state governments look towards.
Thanks. Mike, planning commission feedback at all on this concept?
You know, we brought up, um, that, uh, you know, in our analysis of the code, this was one of the items that stuck out because of, um, you know, the proposal at 80% and the code requirement at 50, and they don't quite reconcile yet. Um, so we always shared with the planning commission is that we would be having a, a policy level discussion with the council. Um, and that was just at the last meeting. So I think we'll get into it more, uh, here in the first week of October. Uh, but it hasn't been discussed in, in great detail yet.
It definitely raised some question in my mind as well. Council members for the questions.
I have a quick question, Mayor. Is this, uh, retroactive on other developments or how does this work? And I, if we don't know where it came from, why are we at 50, I guess, and everybody else is 80? I guess that's the, the easy question.
Yeah, so, um, any, we've had one PDD project approved already, uh, known as the Walsh project. I, I think you're all familiar with that. That was approved at, with the 50% number. There's obviously, um, about half the number of units on that project than there are proposed on this one. So it's a little different in, in that regard, but they are providing the, their share of units at 50%. Any future amendment to the ordinance would not change that because theirs, theirs is approved and adopted and, and that, it holds with that property.
It seems like it's a pretty, a pretty weighty ask for so early on in the process. Has the developer considered looking for those subsidies to make it happen? Those charitable organizations?
I, well, I disagree that it's early on in the process. I mean, we're, we've, we've addressed basically, I think every requirement of this zone change, including this one in this way. Uh, as far as applying for other funding, um, it would be extremely difficult for us to get any attention of any of these, uh, agencies based on the type of project that we're building. We have approached HUD about HUD financing for this particular project. Um, they've already turned us down. And the reason for it is because of the ongoing operation, the, uh, lack of, uh, certainty about the time, uh, that Mr. Shelby is going to continue running the, uh, gravel pit operation. They just said because of that uncertainty, they were unwilling. Um, so as far as the other, as far as the other agencies, I think it would be very difficult for us to get their attention based on the type of project that we are proposing.
Mike Johnson, what are you asking from the council tonight?
Well, like I said, um, if the council would be willing to, uh, entertain a, a more flexible affordable housing option, we, I don't know that there is one decided on. I, I shared what our preliminary draft will be when the full PDD amendment comes forward, but that, um, if there's, um, consideration of, of flexibility, we would work with the applicant and initiate kind of a a parallel process to amend the PDD text, which would need to happen regardless to change it from the 50% that it is right now.
Mike?
Yeah.
If, if this applicant would not have even raised this issue, would you have been, have brought this back for a review anyway?
If this never would have been raised, the, the proposal today is, well, let, I, I think I understand what you're asking. If this wasn't part of this application, yeah, the, the affordable housing was going to be addressed in the next update to the PDD.
Yeah, that was my understanding. That's why I brought that up. I, I heard that this was a question before, before I ever heard it was a problem with this applicant. This was a concern and an issue in the PDD language.
Yeah. I'm sorry, Christine's here. I'm, I'm now I'm hearing, I feel like I'm hearing two conflicting messages, Mike. I, I thought that it was just so that with the Ivory Homes development, they were able to meet the 50% threshold with fewer number of units. And here we are, fast forward a year or two, this, I think is much bigger. Interest rates are much lower. I guess I'm struggling with where we are today in this development and size and interest rates and financeability. And what the mayor just said, which was, sounds like it was a problem. So can you help me understand? Maybe, maybe I'm just misunderstanding the references and.
Yeah, um, no, you're correct. Ivory is, is doing it. Um, I know they, they did struggle with it, but ultimately they, I don't know how, they found a way to do it. So they are moving forward, but um, I, I do think the scale and the size of the developments does, matters a little bit. And you have something twice the size and especially leading into the southern gravel pit development, which could be, you know, exponentially larger. Uh, we felt, we're not trying to get away from providing affordable housing, but we felt that adding some flexibility was important. So 50% at, at 10% of the units is great. That, that's still an option, but, uh, if they want to provide something that's, that's at 80% AMI, but they can provide more units, um, we, we thought that was a viable option as well. So, so the intention there was not to take away the difficult provision, but to create some flexibility and, and a balance there.
If we maybe get creative and, and create an exchange, something of value to the city and its residents that comes out of this development, like an amphitheater.
Yeah, I mean, I would.
I, I guess, I'm, I guess the, I, I mean, I guess I'm, I'm seeing the ask is you either get, you get twice as many units, but they comply with the 80% as opposed to of the 10% of the units at 50%. Um, I guess I, when it boils down to every, that's kind of where I'm seeing the ask. As far as a benefit to the community, it's whether you have more or how many and what type of affordable units, so that more than just one income level can live in the city.
Yeah, and that's built in. It's already stated, um, the affordable units, regardless of the, the rate of affordability, it has to be mixed across different unit types. So you can't just, you can't make all your affordable units 400 square foot mini studios. They have to be comparable to the other units in a project.
Well, isn't, isn't the, isn't the other ask, as I look at the spreadsheet on the screen, the tax increment financing? I, I know that there's quite a money that's set aside for every CRA that goes into existence. And there's a, a fund, I thought a pool of money for this type of development. I, I guess, is the, is, is there an ask with the tax increment financing or is, as I, I mean, that's what I'm seeing on the screen. There's flexibility and they're going to want to come back and get, um, a subsidy, I think is the word they used, or tax increment financing. Is that another way?
We, right, right now on the tax increment financing, we could not commit to anything related to that because we don't have an area created, um, and that defined at least at this point. So I think it would just have to be focused tonight on your direction on whether you want to see some flexibility in us move forward with a text amendment to look, allow for 80% or less. Um, because tax increment would not be on the table as far as our discussion tonight.
Yeah, we're not voting tonight. Yeah.
Yeah, it also seems to me, if you, if you go back to that chart that you, that, that Mike, you had up there, I mean, while the 80% is the most needed, we, we don't want to detract from the fact that there still is a 30% and 30 to 50% need. So I think if you're going to offer a flexibility, you can't go from 50 to 80 and then ignore the 30. I think the flexibility might need to be across all income levels rather than just one, because it seems inequitable. I, I, maybe I'm wrong. Tim, I'd like to hear your perspective on that.
Mike, could you, were you going to say something on that?
Well, not, I, I can, after you respond, I can give my opinion.
Go ahead.
No, that, that Mike Johnson.
No, I just think, like I said, the, the flexibility, that, that language I showed is just very preliminary. That, that could be fine-tuned and, and worked out to include some of those broader, uh, you know, covering a broader range and, and the council can, you know, recommend greater flexibility to achieve a certain purpose. That, that was just a starting point as we take this, the, the upcoming amendment forward. I just felt it was important to include because of Rockworth's request to have this discussion tonight.
Okay, I, I, I would support further discussion with the concept of being more flexible. I think it seems logical and appropriate. But I'd, I'd like to fine-tune that language to deal with some of the concerns and questions that will be raised in that flexibility. That is my perspective. So glad to hear from the rest of the council.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I like the idea of flexibility and Tim, maybe if you'll make a note, I would be in, for our next meeting, I would like to maybe have a little more in-depth discussion on exactly how that works and how, and, and the ins and outs of the, uh, the tax increment as well. Cause I'm, yeah, I'm not in a spot to, to do that. The flexibility can be good and it can be great. It can be useful, but it needs to be implemented at the right way.
Last question, Tim. We didn't, uh, the Ivory development wasn't, we didn't put that in a CRA, right?
That, that's correct. It was not in a CRA.
Okay, that's important. Thanks.
So.
All right.
Mayor, so the bottom line is, I'm hearing flexibility, craft some language and move it forward to bring back to the council for consideration. Is that what I'm hearing?
I, I think that's what I'm, I'm hearing, but I would just be sensitive to some of the comments because that language is going to be critical and how it's applied with that flexibility. So, yeah.
Obviously this would set precedence. Is that correct? Or would each individual with the PDD would be, uh, individual new project? I mean, or would this set a precedence?
This would be for all projects going forward is my understanding.
Yeah, that's correct. And, and that's where we can fine-tune any language that gives the council flexibility to make sure there is, there is some discretion, uh, on a project-by-project basis.
I guess last question is, is there a way we can fi- find out where the 50% AMI came from? I think understanding that would be really useful and helpful to me. Sounds like that's.
I'll go back. I'll try to find something and.
Brian, I mean, maybe call Brian or I don't know.
Yeah. Yep.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Appreciate it. And, and our guests, uh, appreciate your attendance tonight. We've only got a couple of minutes left and we have one of our outstanding employees who's been, of course, we have a lot of outstanding employees and this is one of those. Um, Samantha's here to talk about sustainability updates. So Samantha, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Great. Um, do you mind stopping your screen share?
Oh, thanks, Mike. Yeah, if you can cut out of that and then I'll share mine. Can you guys hear me? Okay, can I get a thumbs up? Okay, no, it's perfect. I'm working through some technical difficulties today, so I appreciate that. Okay. And is everybody seeing, what are you guys seeing? Are you seeing presenter view or are you seeing?
Seen your whole desktop or the whole, over the whole window.
Do you see the presentation?
Yeah, but it.
Uh, yeah, hopefully when you start the slide.
Okay. Okay, now are you seeing it? I'm going to go with yes on that.
We can see it. It's not in presentation mode, but I think this is fine.
Okay, I'm just going to go with it because I want to get you guys into your next meeting and I'm not sure what my computer's doing. Um, today I'm going to be giving you a bit of an update on sustainability projects in our city. Um, and I, if it is all right with the council, I'd recommend that we kind of zip through these and then if there's questions at the end, uh, we can go through that, but I want to make sure you, um, have all this information. So, um, as far as EV chargers go, we completed EVSE, uh, installation at Cottonwood Heights in our city hall parking lot. As you can see here in this photo, we have a, a user using the charger. Um, and we also completed a similar project in Holiday. Both projects were awarded.
Your slides are not moving.
Oh, um, okay. Let's see. I'm just going to keep talking while I figure it out and we'll go with that. Um, so we completed two electric vehicle projects in, um, our jurisdictions. Holidays and Cottonwood Heights were both awarded the maximum funding. Um, from the DAQ and also Rocky Mountain Powers Rebates Program. Um, and both of those have been um, operating smoothly without any glitches. Um, and so that's been a positive experience there. Um, are you guys seeing? I'm so sorry. I don't know what's happening with, um, this presentation here.
That's probably.
Are you seeing it now? Okay, great. Let me go back one. Oh, and thankfully IT is here to help me. Um, the public works departments have also worked on striping and, um, adding signage to these stalls to designate it for EV use. Our Arbor Day grant, um, has been a collaboration between, between Butlerville Days Committee, the Parks Charles and Open Space Committee, and then also our events and sustainability staff members. And we secured some grant funding for a tree planting event and that will actually take place this Thursday. That grant, uh, money was awarded through the Utah Department of Natural Resources. Um, and the trees will be planted mostly at city hall with 10 trees going there and then, um, about five trees going at the recreation center. Um, we are also working on a collaboration with, um, some neighboring cities and the Seven Canyons Trust nonprofit on a countywide seven greenways visioning plan. This plan, um, serves the purpose of facilitating long-range improvements along the seven major waterways in the Wasatch range. waterways in the Wasatch Range. There's a list there that goes through all seven. You'll notice two of them, Big and Little, Cottonwood Creek, our local here at Cottonwood Heights. We are currently in the process of selecting a project consultant through some interviews. We are also collaborating with Cache County and Utah Water Watch and other Utah communities on a statewide waterway cleanup that will take place this fall. And this cleanup is slated to span several weeks in order to be sensitive to social distancing and also just, you know, conflicting schedules with volunteers. We will be attending a meeting in early October to discuss site selection and also publicity and marketing for this event. Onto our Sustainability Action Plan. As a reminder, this is an interlocal plan that will facilitate sustainability projects region wide for Cottonwood Heights, Holiday and Mill Creek. Oh, okay, I'm going to pause just for one second.
Well, Samantha, we lost your presentation.
Yeah, Matt's fixing it.
Oh.
Are you guys seeing it now?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, awesome. Great. Well, onto the Sustainability Action Plan. This interlocal plan between Cottonwood Heights, Holiday and Mill Creek is in kind of research and writing phase. We have received feedback from city staff from each of these cities and will be incorporating that into the final draft. And it'll be ready for council consideration with anticipated date of kind of late winter, January 2021. And on to the Community Renewable Energy Program, also known as HB411. Another brief reminder, this program aims to achieve net 100% renewable energy for participating communities. A net 100% renewable community is one that is still connected and powered by the broader grid, but whose annual electricity consumption is offset by the production of new renewables. You may remember passing a resolution last year. This was the first step for participation in this program, to pass a non-binding resolution by the end of 2019 to achieve this net 100% mark for city operations by 2030. Cottonwood Heights, Holiday, Mill Creek, and 19 other communities passed this resolution. And we are now working through the next steps. And our staff has been pleased to serve as a main collaborating partner for steering committees, for some subgroups, working out different cost sharing and voting mechanisms, and also creating some resources that are easily understood. And this will, of course, come back to council at the appropriate interval for review and discussion. And solar for our building has been a past discussion item, and I know an item of interest for the council. We have an existing solar quote for panels on city hall roof that is dated June 2019. This quote and kind of the associated study, the feasibility study that went with it was prepared by Spectrum Engineers, which is the same firm that was utilized for the construction of our city hall building. They're pretty familiar with the circumstances here. And we've been looking into some cost incentive programs that might aid in that investment. We unfortunately are ineligible for any of the tax credit options as a government entity. And the Blue Sky Program actually just reopened applications for Utah. They have a total award amount for all Utah applications of just over $1 million. That could be an avenue for obtaining some funding. That is a program through Rocky Mountain Power. And then finally, with solar, we've been coordinating with some local nonprofits to stay updated on some proposed changes with solar. And Rocky Mountain Power is proposing to reduce the export credit from the existing 9.2 cents per kilowatt hour to 1.5 cents. The Public Service Commission, which is a public entity who's required to review these proposals, will be holding a hearing later this month. And then finally, this is the last one, our sustainability staff has been coordinating a grant application to request funding through the Utah Clean Air Partnership, also known as UCARE. This grant application is requesting funding for a tri-city emission baselining project. So another collaboration with Cottonwood Heights, Holiday and Mill Creek. This project will quantify the emissions for our current city operations in terms of a few different pollutants. And it just kind of give us a baseline for where we are at with our existing operations. It only requires an in-kind match, so that will be done through staff time. And our letter of intent was approved with a full application due next month. So I so appreciate you guys being patient and bearing with me. These Zoom meetings are tricky. And I hope I've left a few minutes for any questions you have before your next meeting.
Well, I'm sure there's many questions and time's running out. But would you just quickly talk about the, working with the other two cities that are part of our direct collaboration? Holiday, Mill Creek, is that going well? Have you met with their councils? Are they supportive? How is this whole relationship going with respect to that three-city working group?
The collaboration has been wonderful. And I feel like there are a lot of natural overlaps, I think, as was anticipated in the creation of the interlocal agreement. Staff from each department with me kind of coordinating have been involved in many of these initiatives that have gone over tonight. And I think it's working as a really great partnership. I would love to see cities eventually, you know, hire on more sustainability staff, but it would be bittersweet for me to not be working with them anymore. So it's, it's been great. And I'm grateful for the opportunity.
Thank you, Samantha. I've heard nothing but positive comments from different sources on your efforts. So thank you so much.
Well, if questions do come up, oh, sorry, please continue, Mayor.
No, I think there'll be more questions. And if they're, just drag those through. Tim, sorry, we're out.
Absolutely. I, I'm available to answer those questions. And we'll look, look out for communication from Tim. And thank you again for bearing with me through my technical difficulties.
No, great. Luckily, we had, we had a draft before to read through it. So it's well done and you're outstanding. Thank you. Counsel, looking at your agenda, I'm not aware of any calendar items. Just a reminder that the October meeting, I'll be out of town. I think I've announced that last couple of meetings. And Scott is mayor pro Tim will be conducting that meeting. Any final comments before we adjourn our work session and reconvene in our business meeting in about five minutes? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn our work session and reconvene our business meeting in 7:05.
Make that motion.
Moved by Councilor Bracken. Do I have a second?
A second to that.
Second by Councilor Peterson. All favorites, put your thumbs up.
All right.
Anybody opposed? More importantly. Okay, that's unanimous. I'll see you at 7:05. Thank you.